I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have some tax refunds that we needed to do. So we have real estate refunds in amount of $6,530.15, personal property in amount of $5.18, motor vehicle in the amount of $1,399.29, and motor vehicle supplement in an amount of $143.30 for a grand total of $8,017.22. A motion to approve? Any discussion? On favor? Another item was, Melissa, you were asking Diane Dondick, who is the senior van driver, you're asking for documentation, which is why we needed to do tax refunds. Obviously, our meeting the other night was canceled due to being a joint meeting with the Board of Education, so we needed to take care of the tax refunds and I put her retirement on under your business so that if you had questions, we could do it publicly to have these answered. So as you can see, there's a letter from her, her retirement. There is other documentation showing management rights, deal of change of hours. You can see here is also a letter asking for documentation of her documenting her hours back in November of 2018 and then a change on February 7 of filling in her hours, which we've been doing every year basis with social services. Giving her, they tried to accommodate to keep a position in place for her of 20 hours. She had been helping social services since the meeting had been signed in September of 2018 and were able to keep her employee status. But after the holidays came that time, the law there was no longer in need for social services. We adjusted her hours accordingly.
First of all, I'll start by saying I'm very disappointed that there's no public comment section. We have a lot of important things that are going on in our town, especially since the combo of COVID-19 or COVID-19. I think the people deserve the right to speak and I think we should have a regular board of selectmen with public comments. When you and Larry voted to cut our meetings in half for the year, I warned them this at that time for your special meeting to include public comments. I'm not sure why. So that's the first thing. The second thing, I noticed that this letter is actually signed by Joanne and not you, which I find puzzling. And third, I'd like to know why or where you have the authority to make a change hours employee status.
All right. So the first thing is there was a town meeting that was scheduled. We had planned a regular meeting Monday night. That meeting was ready to go. There's a town meeting scheduled tonight at 6:30. So having a short amount of time to be able to do anything, we just decided to have this meeting on Tuesday because Chris did that study requested that some tax refunds be done. There's some significant dollar amounts here, so that's the reason why it's a special meeting. We just kind of fit it in so we could order this business. So it's not a meeting to handle full agenda because I figured we're all going to be here for a town meeting anyways. Although I know that was the case 20 years, instead of having people come out at two different times, that's why we're not doing some comments this evening. As far as getting those letters and seeing what you have to ask for.
I forgot your last question. Who gives you, where is it written that you have the authority to change hours and employee status?
I have the authority to change hours under the union contract. I also have the authority in the charter.
Actually, if you could direct me exactly to that point in the charter where you have those authorities. And the union contract is not Trump or charter. The charters are law of the land and the law of the Patten is Trump sent you.
Well, to hire and fire, so to hire and fire employees is what writing for the selectmen. Correct. No one's terminated should be signed. I can change hours if they see fit.
Yeah, I should make those. But again, Melissa, I shot for Nick and I never agreed to do it. So you're saying this is a, you received legal, that's an opinion.
We actually met with the union to change these hours. We actually had a meeting with the union.
The union has nothing to do with the laws of our town.
Nick was in the meeting. There's management rights. I have the rights to day-to-day. I have the right to schedule their hours. I can cut that, just like you got rid of the, you didn't want to replace the assistant tax collector.
That was, that was not filling a position. Now, I'd like to see exactly where in the charter where it's written out that you.
You happen to do that.
Let me redo then this section here. This is section 8.14 of the Patten Charter. "The Board of Selectmen shall be responsible for the hiring, review, evaluation, suspension, and dismissal of all employees of the town. The Board of Selectmen shall establish wage and salary scales, job descriptions, and working hours of any class of employee." Again, this was not legal the way this was done. We had budget meetings where we could have talked about the senior van driver position. We did not bring this up in those meetings. This is not a legal move to cut her hours because I'm trying to protect her.
I followed what Attorney Morello told me I had the right to do. I'd like to review that document and if we feel there's an issue. She resigned. I don't plan to cut the position. If anything, now we have someone who's willing to drive her trips out of town and if anything, we can have two drivers versus one driver.
Again, this is about the position. In which meeting did we vote to appoint a court driver?
We haven't done it. Whenever there's been a hand's been out in the past, we have a temporary position. We have to follow the union rules. We have to post the position. We have to put out to hire. And we're in the process of doing that. It has to get posted in public works, which it did. I believe it's still up for a certain period of time and then we can go out and we can hire for the position.
So currently, we do not have a senior van driver.
We have a temporary driver.
That is something that the Board of Selectmen must vote on.
Okay. Again, according to Nick, because of the way it works with the union, we have the right to temporarily appoint someone to be able to fill in because it is a union position through the union and we have to go through the process. So to not have the seniors, not have the drivers to take them where they needed to go, we did exactly what we did the last time. Diane Dondick was out on medical leave, who was our previous senior van driver. We hired a temporary driver to come in and drive the seniors.
You don't need to vote on these things at a Board of Selectment meeting. It is not under the purview of the Board of Selectmen. And if Mr. Morello made a legal opinion, I would like to see that in writing.
Okay. Then I will go back to Nick. I'm asking to provide that.
And this is actually something that does not fall under our union representation, our union order. This should be a, our town attorney should be handling this. This is a town charterage, not an employee, it's a town charterage.
Any employee matter that has to do with changing hours, that has to do with the union, that has to do with MOUs for employment, Nick Morello is in everything the entire town.
I look forward to seeing his written committee.
We should have talked to him instead of perhashing this back and forth around the house. You say tomorrow, whatever. Let's just deal, okay, I understand that, but you know what? We're going back and forth over it. It's, let's sit down with him. The three of us need to sit down, sit down, and go over it and be done with it.
No, this has to be done at a public meeting. This is, Larry, this is yours and my job. We were elected as selectmen to do this job. It's literally the law of our town. So this is something that we need to handle at a public meeting. And we also need to vote on, although it's not on the agenda and we can't add it tonight, we do need to vote on a temporary driver. And I would like to see temporary driver passenger endorsements for their license.
Why do you need to see that? The insurance company's satisfied, the public works assistant director's satisfied, and on their life. First of all, you need a special license to drive this.
Yes, you do.
Okay. Again, day-to-day responsibility, Melissa.
This is not day-to-day. This is, this is the Board of Selectmen.
You're talking about the license. That does not fall under.
It's part of the hiring process, just like when you go out to bid, say, it should be all day. When you go out to bid, this is very important, guys. This is very important. What happens if a driver gets into an accident and they do not have the proper?
Okay, but we do know he hasn't, right?
Yes, I see that.
Again, another vendetta.
It's not a vendetta. This is my job. I'm working, I'm working.
Well, you shouldn't be happy because you talked to the officer, so you shouldn't be happy about that. You already know he is, because if he isn't, he would have got pulled over today.
As you instructed.
We already know that he has his license.
So again, another vendetta. A gentleman who wanted to run for the same seat you wanted to run for a selectman, who you boxed out underneath the nominating committee so that you could run on the ticket by yourself. Every time we put people in front of you, Melissa, that you don't like or you don't agree with, we try to make the job harder. But when Nancy Cashman, who was the previous temporary driver, came and we had somebody fill in for Diane, everything was okay.
I had no idea Nancy Cashman.
You didn't ask for your license. You didn't ask for this. You didn't ask for that. So you know what? I put this on the agenda because I'm tired of me going on Facebook, putting accusations. You went to the Committee on Aging meeting, you got all of those seniors upset that I'm cutting senior services.
We cut the van driver.
The van driver is driving more now than she was before.
It took her hours.
I might have cut her hours, but she was driving the van.
Look, if they tell you to.
Again, we're getting off topic.
I have a schedule of all people who are picked up for medicals. I have five people in the month of November. I have four people in the month of December. We don't need a 35-hour-a-week van driver. This was negotiated when you also approved the contract. The language in the contract for the senior van driver was cut from 40 hours to 35 hours. And it was also discussed that she was going to help out social services. And they knew that she was not fulfilling a full-time. They were appreciative of the fact that the town tried to continue to keep her fully employed. Because as a matter of fact, prior to that, she was too busy when Phil Goff was here, running his errands, cleaning his house, and doing his personal things because she was afraid she was going to lose her job and be bullied. You know that as well as I know that.
That is not what happened. All right. And so this has to be taken care of at a Board of Selectmen, Selectmen meeting.
That's fine. I will talk to Attorney Morello. If you feel that I was in error of changing her hours and I wasn't in the right to do that, I am happy to go through the process.
You said that Nick said you had the authority to do that, so I might just do that.
He did. He did. Joanne and I both had a discussion with him. And I will reach out to him tomorrow and I will find out. But why would we, for the total of, I have a schedule of all the hours of 10 hours a week driving a van, pay somebody full-time to drive that van, plus medical benefits?
This is a discussion we should have had during the budget.
Well, again, it didn't happen, Melissa, during the budget time.
So it just happened in the last couple of weeks.
It just happened. She just retired. You got the letter.
She retired because her hours were cut. Again, this is a discussion.
It doesn't say that in her email or in her retirement letter. But I also assume, I'm glad you took this, you did.
Read your letter.
She wrote a letter. This is what we received. I'm retiring.
We don't have a good track. Again, this is all legal point. This is something that we must vote on, that he, including the assistant or fill-in driver or whatever you decide to hire for that time.
Again, it's not, we can't hire.
We can be hired.
Is he still not retiring?
No, we compensate him for his time on a temporary basis.
We hired somebody.
Why you're filling the need? No, it is not a part of the hire.
We're just putting him on so that these old, so these seniors have a place to go. We have somebody.
The seniors should have their services. The seniors should have a full-time driver ready to go at any day. Now, if that's how it's set up, we can talk about that. But again, it is our job to vote on hiring and firing an employee.
That is correct.
Or changing hours.
No one got fired and no one got hired. And when the time comes for that, we will, as a board, do what's appropriate. Someone retired. I don't see a reason I'm here. I am retiring.
Did you, are you currently paying somebody to drive the senior van?
Yes, I am.
That makes that person an employee of the town.
They are not an employee of the town.
So somebody who gets paid by the town has not an employee of the town.
No, they're not.
You said that once already. You said that. Because if we get paid a stipend, you said you weren't an employee, well, you just kind of have to figure yourself.
We're officials, Larry. It's something totally different.
But we still get, we get a stipend. As a stipend, we're getting paid. These people are giving us, we're getting money for it. It's the exact same thing. It's a temporary thing for him. So let's take it and we'll get to that. Let's figure out what we're going to do then. And that's good. That's, we should have, we're wasting everybody's time.
I don't think we're wasting, this is the Board of Selectmen's purview. This is what we literally are elected to do by the people of this town.
It's our responsibility to make sure the seniors are taking the proper.
Exactly.
And that's what we're doing.
Due to it being.
Not doing a very well position. That's your opinion. We don't know if this person has the appropriate license.
Melissa, they do. We don't need to worry about that. That is not your concern.
It is my concern. I am a selectman and I'm worried about these seniors being driven around by someone who might not have the proper endorsements. I don't see, I think that's a very simple request.
And you don't think that question was asked?
We have not.
But this is the everyday thing.
It's not the everyday thing.
He's not hired him. So as of right now, it's a temporary thing. You don't think that Liz already asked for those?
It's not Liz's, just Liz's purview.
Okay, but that's not the question. The question was, you're afraid that he doesn't have those endorsements.
I don't know he does, correct?
Well, I would trust, I would trust that Liz would check that. I would check.
I'm going to Trucker Millardo and ask him to call Mr. Ruddy over to make sure.
Wait a minute. No, I did not ask him to call him over. I was at a Board of Education meeting on Tuesday evening. Trucker Millardo walked by and I asked him a question about passenger endorsements. And I told him the situation. I look forward to having this discussion and actually making a vote after I see the opinion of the.
I'm excited.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a call to the meeting to order. Excuse me, everyone. We have a call to the meeting to order. Yes, we can all, not all of us are here. We're at a 6 o'clock meeting, so if we can stand up and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, just a order of business. A motion from the Board of our moderator, please.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Sorry, Paul.
I'll go up.
It's okay.
Jeff, hold over B.
Second, Jeff, over B.
Second.
Any other nominations from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Jeff.
Could you all come in? I'd like to start by asking the convener to read the call for the meeting. Legal notice, common Patten. Notice of special town meeting, March 14, 2019, at 6:30 p.m. Notice hereby given to all electors and others entitled to vote that town meetings of the town of Patten, Connecticut, the town, the special town meeting of the town will be held at the Haddon Volunteer Fire Company, Community Hall, 439 Saber Grove, Higginham, Connecticut, 06438, for the following purpose. To choose a moderator to preside over such meeting and if considered and voted on in accordance with Charter Section 3-8 and 3-9, upon a resolution to purchase easements for a water line at 69 Little Meadow Road and at 98 Little Meadow Road, and if necessary, commence legal proceedings for the acquisition of said easements in accordance with Connecticut law. A complete copy of the above referenced resolutions is available at the Office of the Town Court. Date in Haddon, Connecticut, the 7th day of March, 2019. Board of Selectmen, Liz Millardo, Larry Madge, Melissa Schlaub. Do you have a motion to accept the call?
Some would.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. What we just did was define scope of the meeting, so we're here to talk about the resolution.
All right. So just for some background, as many of you are aware, the town received a grant from the State of Connecticut for the consent order that we are under for Tylerville Water. Little Meadow Road is a private road. We have two easements that we need to go through the road to put the water line in because it's a private road. We need permission from the property owners to do such. I did receive one easement from one of the property owners earlier today. However, I'm still going to continue with that property for now because I have not signed that easement to put on record for the town law. So we're going to continue with that. Basically, the two properties, one's 69 Little Meadow Road, one's 98 Little Meadow Road. And appraisal was done for each property. The appraisal at 69 Little Meadow Road will increase the property value with clean water of $30,000. And the appraisal with clean water at 98 Little Meadow Road will increase the property value for $25,000. The easements, because they are making the property value higher, they're considered a utility easement. The consideration for each easement would be $1. Because this is the legal body that we need to do for our charter for town meeting. The town needs to vote to pursue, to get these easements to go to court and ask the judge to allow us to do that. I'm being told per legal counsel that easements are granted usually within 30 days. This will help because post-line construction has been stuck since the end of January to re-clean water. Two of those easements are about watering in since the end of January. And they're running out of places to go right now because the asphalt companies aren't open. We can't run the DOT right away to continue to do that. This has been something that's been, obviously, many years in the works. Clean water is, I feel, fundamental human need and right. I really don't understand what the holdup is on one consideration. One property owner was fearful that the septic system would not be able to be used if he put in, despite talking to the health department and being told to put them asleep. From what I was told, they never contacted the building department. They actually have 24 feet away from where their septic system is, so there's plenty of room there. They don't intend to be. So that's not an issue for how that's going to be. And then the other property owner, I'm not really sure what that is, but legal counsel is going back and forth. So that's the background. That's why we're here. And we just need to, I guess, make motions. Both resolutions are here to give the town the right to continue to be able to go through with the water.
Do I have a motion on the first, on the first resolution, that's the 69 Little Meadow? Once we, once we get a motion, then we can start discussion on it.
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion?
For that?
For both units?
This, both properties.
One of them.
A motion to approve the resolution to purchase easement for a water line at 69 Little Meadow Road and if necessary, commence legal proceedings for the acquisition of said easements in accordance with Connecticut law. Do I have a motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
Just a question. Does it, to call a meeting for both?
Yes, but we have to go down this separately. So they're not tied at the same time in court, otherwise if we were to continue through, both landowners would have to be present at the same time.
All right. Well, I'm going to frequently my statement regarding the exacting of next property as well as I told you in the Board of Finance meeting, according to our charter, it's the Board of Finance who has the authority to make appropriations to the town. The town needs to have the authority to do that. And I send this to you, to the town attorney, and to the chair of the Board of Finance. It's from here. The town meeting cannot make no special appropriation or transfer of funds not recommended by the Board of Finance. In this case, you're asking us to appropriate money that has been otherwise by the Board of Finance. Therefore, I vote here as a co-chair of this meeting.
Okay.
Scott, do you want to enter my other, I mean, you're on the record as a producer.
So I don't want to answer your two questions. There's a resolution here that was signed, Mr. DeBolt's sitting there, he's one of the other gentlemen who decided, signed it, for a resolution for the Tylerville Water on November 15, 2017, that gives me the right to negotiate, enter into any access agreements, easements, or purchase agreements for real estate subject to approval of a town meeting. We've already gone through that process, number one. Number two, I do not need to go to town meeting for a fund appropriation. I am talking about true dollars. I am well under pressure. The line already exists in the town budget. I'm not taking money out of a line that doesn't exist. The town attorney has looked at this, the Tylerville Water Fund. And I can take it out of legal services. I can take it out of anything. It's $2. I am not over the amount that I need to go to town meeting, which is the shaftless of $25,000. I appreciate your comment. The town attorney has looked this over and has assured me that we are compliant to hold this meeting by the resolution and by what is there.
This is a resolution for a meeting in the main. It's a serious resolution and it's not anywhere in the budget under budget of this year. You may use the water line to repair, fix the pipeline or to build a pipeline, but you're not allowed to use it on a, to rule the reserve domain on the personal property. That's all.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I have one quick thing to add. When you voted on this, I warned the Board of Selectmen of the process that what you just read also mentions going forward with any litigation or doing what you need to do to, it's more than, could be more than $2, especially if there's any legal action by anybody. So it could be a lot more than $2 that you're entering into illegally by not following the process.
Because, Melissa, this resolution gives the right to do what we need to do on the head of the town, not following the.
Does that trump charter and statutes? Is my question.
It was voted on at a town meeting, which is what we followed for our charter, was a town meeting held November 15, 2017.
Any other comments?
I'll donate the two blocks.
Is there any other discussion? If it's not, let's put it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So the ayes have it. Onto the second resolution to purchase easement for a water property line at 98 Little Meadow and if necessary, commence legal proceedings for the acquisition of said easement in accordance with Connecticut law. Is there any discussion?
Make a motion.
Do I have a motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Please.
My name is Mary. I'm a senior van husband and daughter. We are the Friday owners of 98 Little Meadow Road. And we have the funds for the pharmacy. pharmacy, because we have a friend in town, that there is a lot of misinformation about what is going on here and what our real position is on the subject. For this reason, we were forced to postpone an important medical procedure that had been scheduled for my husband three months in advance for tomorrow morning in Florida at eight AM to travel all the way to Connecticut to attend this meeting. We first wanted to clarify the one thing that wasn't really clear in this public notice and the sole purpose of this meeting is to obtain approval to commence an eminent domain proceeding against us to allow an easement for a water main to be constructed across our properties. We want to state clearly for the record, we have never been opposed to the water main project on Little Meadow Road. Of course we want clean, safe water and how. We also want to state clearly that we never demanded or expecting any monetary compensation in return for us granting this easement as the meeting was in place. We have repeatedly conveyed these positions verbally and in writing to the town's attorney. Unfortunately, as we interpret the current easement according, when combined with the easement's current location, we've concluded that the potential expansion of our existing dwelling will be reduced by one-third by this easement. The town's attorney has claimed we are misreading the easement as it pertains to development within the easement area. In order to clarify this, we've had three independent attorneys review the easement language, and all three agree that the easement language as it currently exists prevents us from placing any structures, permanent or temporary, or not even a shrub, within the easement area. We feel we must preserve our ability to develop our property as we had planned prior to the existence of this easement. We have stated the only thing that needs to be done to achieve this is to relocate the easement twelve point five from the town view, west of its current proposed location, so it's in line with the easement as it already crosses two other neighbors to itself. If this can be accomplished, we'll sign the modified easement immediately, and the project can proceed without further delay or the need to spend large sums of taxpayer dollars to prosecute this imminent domain action court. We've lived in town for fifty years and raised our family. We've operated a business here for thirty of those years and provided jobs for many of your children. We do not have the wherewithal to pursue a lengthy legal battle with the town over an issue like this. All we can do is ask you, put yourself in our place, and imagine losing a meaningful portion of your property that you had hoped to use and enjoy in your retirement through the imminent domain action as proposed by the town tonight. We must simply, we must simply place ourselves in the future and enhance it those tonight hopefully not grant the town approval to pursue this imminent domain action. If this is done and the easement is relocated, we promise at the moment we receive the modified easement agreement, we will sign it, and we can all put this unfortunate situation behind us. Finally, we feel the town's decision to pursue the route of imminent domain fore-exhausted all of the reasonable solutions to any problem like this can be a slippery slope and sets a dangerous precedent for future similar actions by the town. We therefore reiterate our hope that those present here tonight do not approve the proposed imminent domain action and instead encourage the town to either change the wording in the easement to guarantee our ability to place permanent structures within the easement area, or preferably to relocate the easement twelve point five feet to the west, as we requested. Thank you.
I have a few questions, Mr. Smith. Have you talked to the building inspector and talked to anyone about increasing your priority?
I've talked to the council and it's according to this agreement.
Did you also recently email from your attorney at that time Bob Ziegler from February first, stating that the water line installation would be on the west side of the easement?
No.
Okay, it's right here, and I'm happy to...
Can you repeat that, please?
There is a letter that was sent to Robert Ziegler from Richard Corella, the town attorney, on February first, two thousand and nineteen, at twelve thirty-six. Bob, I told you we cannot move the actual easement, and we can't because of what deep is ordered. We are willing to restrict...
Be more...
Deep, the state of Connecticut, we're in consent order with the state of Connecticut.
To where the easement is?
Yes. We are willing to restrict, much like we did with, with Mr. Chagret, who's the other property owner, the installation to the west side of the easement. Additionally, for Mr. Smith, we are willing to carve out an area in the street line on the east side and eliminate that area from the scope of the easement. We'll do that in the body of the language of the easement, but we are not able to change the max at this point, and it's because of the consent order. Will the Smiths agree? Followed with a response from Mr. Chagret, I'm sorry, from Mr. Ziegler, at one thirty-seven PM on Friday, February first? No.
Our attorney has never informed us...
It is right, I'm sorry, that's your attorney and that's your problem.
He's not our attorney.
No, he's not our attorney. He severed his relationship with us on this past Monday.
To the conflict of interest.
Again, I can't help that. This is the response from the attorney that you've sent...
So what you're, what you're saying, let's get over, well, you said, what? Are you willing to, to move the easement?
They need to sign the easement.
Okay, well, no, wait, we need to understand what you're asking us to sign. I would like to read what you have here.
I can't change that right now, again, it's too late in the game. I'm happy to, this is the means to do that. If you want to negotiate it to do that, this is a vote on the table. Dan is here with Detective Ward, he can answer whatever questions, where we're at with that. I don't know, Dan, do you want to, do anything you can say or want to say?
I don't know what the question is.
I'm not really sure either.
Mr. Ogilvy, can I ask a question that might solve all the problems? Can we table this until all the parties can sit together? It'd only take probably a couple of weeks to go through this so they feel comfortable, can water feel comfortable in the town?
Am I right?
I think it's, this is a legal document, so I'll put a motion on the floor that we table this.
There are easements.
This is a no motion, it's another motion. In addition, I'll second it one more time. Do the second.
Any other discussion on that? Maybe we can get an explanation of exactly where that water line is going to go on that easement.
My only comment is that what we have just been told tonight is the first time we have heard Teddy talk this, and I do not know what's going on here. What I will tell you is this, for reasons that we do not understand, our attorney, who has been in touch evidently with your attorney as one, never communicated that information to us, and two, severed his relationship with us this past Monday.
Tuesday.
Or two, I'm sorry, Tuesday. And so we're here without representation, and we have no communication such as I raised right here. This is brand new information, though, at this moment.
Okay, so this is going back February first, six weeks ago. Coastline was sitting at the bottom of the street to go up and put a water line. We cannot wait, we need to take care of this. I'm happy to meet if you're here right now, with you, with town council on Monday, unfortunately. He has a family emergency and is out, or I can get him on the phone tomorrow.
And we're scheduled to go back to Florida tomorrow morning.
Is that medical surgery?
Well, I can't help what your attorney did for you, and I feel bad about that or not, but this is the, this is where we're at right now. How this can be resolved, I'm sure easily can be resolved.
But, well, fine, but if you both can go to the imminent domain, it can be resolved.
It doesn't mean that we have to, if you sign the easement, just as Mr. Chagret did.
I can't sign an easement that I don't know where I'm signing.
Okay, again, I can't help that. You also spent hours upon hours of conversation with the town attorney explaining this, and I'm happy, again, to make sure that you do understand it. But from what I understand, your biggest concern was that this was going to become a private road, and that you were worried that traffic was going to cross.
That was never our, that was always been a private road. Our major concern was the impact on our buildable square that this easement was going to consume, and the current location of the pipeline, as it is shown on drawings from the eminent water, it runs right along the eastern edge of Little Meadow Road, and the easement is twenty feet, twenty-five feet wide, centered around the location of the water line.
And the tip of the water line is on the opposite end of the side that you needed to go to, that is where coastline stopped.
Right.
And that's where it is, and that's why the attorney, because we knew when the line went through Eagle Landing, we knew where it was going to end, and that's where it's going to run. And again, as we go down, we need to be sensitive to where people have their property lines, they have their wells, they have their septic. But this was taken care of. I can't help or control what your attorney did or not do, and I'm sorry that maybe you just hired the wrong attorney, I don't know. Where we sit right now is this is the action that we need to go through. If this is voted on to go through, I am more than happy in the next few days or weeks to sit with the two of you and make sure you understand the easement, and make sure you understand what's going through, and that we, if that's the case and it's signed, there would be no reason to be able to follow this through. But we have gone through a great length of noticing this meeting, doing what we need to do, contractors are ready to go, we can't afford to lose any time, because if this doesn't go, we will be digging up that road in the middle of the summer when all those residents are there, and I don't think any of you want that.
First of all, we, we've heard people say, just sign it, don't read it.
No.
Many times, no, in many, in politics, we have a healthcare law now that's in effect because people signed it and didn't read it, okay, and there are problems with it. You're asking us to sign this without us knowing what it really says and what we're really allowed to do or not to. And we're not saying we won't sign it, but we are saying that we need to be able to read it and understand it before we sign it.
I understand that, but did your wife, did you, I'm sorry, I thought, did I hear you say you have had three attorneys look at this? Okay, so yeah...
Three attorneys have looked at the easement writing, and all three of those attorneys have disagreed with the, what your town attorney has said the meaning of those clauses say. Not just our attorney, but two additional attorneys have also read it and agreed.
I have no communication from any other attorney except from Mr. Ziegler.
No. And to be honest with you, we're, we feel like we've been list, twisting slowly in the wind by an attorney whom we've paid a lot of money to, to try to negotiate this. I had put a letter together to go to your attorney outlining in great detail what it would take for us to resolve this problem, and he read it and said, don't send it to us. And I said, all right, we're doing the best we can. I would love to sit down with you if we can come up with a solution where we can build within this easement area to the extent that we would like...
I don't see that that would be a problem, again, that's why I asked.
But your attorney, but your, the easement says you can't do it.
That's not what the easement says. And change it?
Can you change it?
No, the easement is just to put the line in.
The easement is not just to put the line in, the easement prevents, let me, can you read that section?
All right, I'm not going to get into all the back and forth right now, because this is a court...
No, but I would, I would like the rest of the folks here at Little Meadow Road to hear what that section says. Read it, okay? Would you folks like to hear what the easement says about... Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to ask something. Previous town meetings, we had a public hearing before a town meeting, a public hearing at least seven days before a town meeting. If we had that, instead of pushing this forward by district, just for towns, with this information, we cannot discuss this in public, because I mean, our comments may not have a town meeting or a public, the town hearing.
You're already opposed to a referendum at a town meeting?
No, no, I'm hearing, town hearing. It's not required, but it's good practice.
I mean, this is, I mean, this debate, I don't know if it's the public or the individual debate.
So what I've heard is, the town is going to work with you on where this goes on, where you take...
Order. Excuse me, what did you say?
I said, this is imminent debate.
By a Republican what?
I said conservatives. I said, no, conservatives.
I was going to ask you, it's a two lead. I can't ask you to... No, you can't ask him.
Why can't you? I didn't ask him to leave.
It's not even on, it's a call.
One personal preference. No, you can't.
Okay, well, he left, he did not...
I know, I know. Do what this is, we have, we're all here to make the town... Thank you, Mark.
Yes, can we read the section and question?
Please, here's what I was concerned.
Go ahead.
Grantor agrees, for itself and its successors and assigns that neither grantor nor any servant, agent, tenant, employer, contractor or grantor, its successors or assigns, shall place or erect any permanent or temporary building or structure or other item, plant, any tree or shrub, in the easement area, or take any other action which will materially interfere with the grantee's use of the imminent area, easement area. Grantor, grantor agrees that any and all utility lines and associated equipment installed in the easement area by the grantee shall be and remain the sole exclusive personal property of the grantee, and that grantor, its successors and assigns, shall not have any right of access to the same without the prior written consent of the grantee.
So basically, you're just giving your land away?
Exactly, that's exactly what's happening.
I didn't hear what you said.
I said, basically, you're just giving your land away then, to the, to the easement.
It's not, it's an easement to run a water line under.
No, but you can't build on it, you can't put a shrub in it.
But it's going in the road, which you...
No, 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 the easement, we're not building on the road, we're talking about the easement. No, no, you got it all wrong.
It's not, it's a one-lane road.
It's a one-lane road, it's coming into the garden, it's coming into the yard. That means you can't put a shrub in it, you can't park on it, if to go to that, you can't, you can't do, you can't put shrubs, you can't do anything.
Yes, what am I missing?
Yeah, no, that's the way to go through. Let's go back six, eight months ago, June, May, when we, we were getting out, we hired a consultant committee to look at what existing features we could find in the, in the Little Meadow, across all those properties, basically looking for septic and other structures. We basically centered the water main along the center line of the road, making necessary adjustments where there were conflicts by code of what we could identify for septic systems or leachive holes and things like that. So that's why there's a job here and there, it's only due to existing features that have to be avoided. Otherwise, if it's going down the road and it came down to do an easement twenty-four feet, basically keeping that pipe centered, in the center of the easement. But what the town attorney had offered was the ones to make, you would keep the mains on one side of the easement, by your property, okay? And then carve out, to the outside, and then carve out after installation, we still need, we still need to maintain certain access to that pipe for repair, for, so we don't damage it. So we need to carve out ten feet of that easement to allow you to come to, allow your access to the easement.
Carve out ten feet of the easement or, or leave?
We'd offer to modify the easement lines that were given a ten-foot buffer once the construction is completed.
We need the water line to where we can build.
From the easement line back to the water line.
Okay, because right...
Because we have to move, now we have to move it from essentially the center of the easement over to within, you know, three or four feet of the west end, which we've made accommodations for, it's a well like that.
You're talking about doing that?
That's what the town attorney offered.
We have never, we have never... All right, well, then it's a misunderstanding, so let's do that. Done, done, and then there's no money in the pot.
You need to fix what it says.
That's why I said table. Motion on the floor, no.
Because I, I think this is all just people's misunderstanding what you're going to do.
That's fine, but I, the vote is here, so people can vote how they need to feel, they should want to vote. This is the object.
Well, I think everybody understands how, what we're saying.
Look, that may be fine and good, but the document is what controls it, and if the document doesn't say what you intend, then the document needs to be revised.
Of course, of course.
The document was revised.
Well, not what, no, what she's reading...
Their attorney didn't give it to them. That's not, what, what am I supposed to do about that?
Well, what you're supposed to do about it is perhaps don't rush into things. And that's what's...
It's been six weeks. It's been six weeks.
But I think this could resolve in the next few days, if everybody just do it, that's it.
But unfortunately, Mr. Duffy, I have to re-notice a meeting.
Okay.
And we're talking another two to three weeks from that.
Excuse me, you're talking about somebody's property, that's a permanent decision. You know, a couple of weeks isn't that bad when you're talking about somebody's property.
If I take, if you have the letter there that the town was willing to do that, before Don comes, goes away in the morning, he could come over and sign it. We don't have to wait two weeks, he can sign it, then you can have any meeting you want. Done. And Dave already signed it.
Dave already signed it, yeah?
Yeah, so I don't even know why we're even sitting here, to be honest with you.
Is there a way you could print that out so they could see what the attorney sent his attorney with the new language? That they didn't receive?
If we go back to town hall, we can do it.
Okay, well, that's the easiest way out, and then get stuff.
But if they don't sign it-
And then let the boys come in tomorrow to sound worse.
They said that they would like to be able to talk to their attorney, and I admit I agree.
He doesn't need to, he understands, he understands if you show it to him.
See, I would not advise them to sign it without having an attorney review it. I mean, this is, you're talking about their property. This is a major decision. Yes, yes, it's clean water for everyone, but it is their property, it is their future. They need to protect themselves, just like you want, someone wants water. They're not objective to have it watered.
Are you now their attorney?
Well, I could be, you know, if they would want. I am his attorney.
That's why I'm asking if you're-
But I'm not, I've not been asked to be their attorney. Just to put a context on it, you know, we've drawn this up, we drafted documents, the town had notified all the property owners, they had a public meeting in August, August.
You're obviously trying to-
We took into consideration all the comments, all the issues, all the concerns at that time for the people who didn't show up, and a number of them did. But there were a hell of a lot of people who didn't show up. And we didn't, so we went with what we had, and we developed, I'm just saying, this has been out there since August. I just want them to be protected too, okay? That's all I'm asking you to do. I want everyone- Just to get out of context on what's going on. Because once it's done, it's done.
Can I make one comment, please? And that is, first of all, I requested a map of Connecticut Water showing the location of the easement in September. I did not get it. When I talked to the town attorney, I again requested a map of the easement and where it was located, and I did not get it. Finally, after a week of discussions with the town attorney, he offered to send me a map that showed where the easement was, but not where the water line was. It was simply a bunch of dots on a piece of paper. He said, "You won't be able to read the documents that show where the water line is located from Connecticut Water." I said, "Send them to me anyway." When I got those on the December 18th, from the town, it was sent by Connecticut Water to us, I opened them up, it was a PDF document, if anyone knows what that is, and I was able to expand that document so I could see exactly where everything was. It was only then that we realized the impact it's had on our property. Then I looked at the actual maps themselves and I looked at the dates on it. They were dated March 3, 2018. Six months, eight months, whatever it was before, I had started asking for them and they were acting like they didn't exist to, or we couldn't see them for some reason.
And you missed the revision dates.
Well, fine, but they were-
There were plenty of revisions done.
Fine, this is what yours, you folks sent us after the latest drawing, and that was what Dan, whatever his last name is-
That's Dan.
Oh, okay, that's what you sent us.
Exactly.
Okay?
So you didn't see the revision dates, because there are revision dates on the paper. That was the initial-
But why couldn't we have seen the previous drawings when we asked for them?
I think you're all fighting over something that's already been done.
Yeah. So, well, anyway, where we're at is this. If we can sit down and read and see what has actually been proposed here, and it's reasonable to us that it will preserve our development rights, we will sign the easement.
All right, well, let's do that.
And Mr. Smith, I have no problem holding we to not go through if we can get this resolved in the next two weeks.
We could do it this evening, Louis, if you could get the documents.
I don't think there's a document draft, I think it was proposed a few times at the time, so there was nothing drafted.
I don't have anything drafted.
Which your attorney at the time denied.
Yeah.
Well, I will say this in all honesty, our attorney sent us one email, which was, he went round and round with the discussions on this thing, he got it over with the town attorney, and that's where it ended. And unfortunately, as I said, we were notified on-
Tuesday morning.
Tuesday morning, that's right. In fact, as late as Monday evening, we were arranging to have the attorney come here and represent us at this meeting. On Tuesday morning, we were told they were severing their relationships with us for a conflict of interest. What that is exactly, I don't understand. And that is why we're here tonight. And that is why we have not had an attorney who could review any of this for the last three or four days. I would respectfully ask that things be delayed or put off or tabled or whatever it is for enough time for us to at least be able to review these supposed documents that would alleviate the concerns that we have. That's all we're at. We want that water line to come through. We don't want it to be delayed till the summer. We don't want any money in return for signing this document. All we want to do is retain our easement rights. And the only other thing I'll say, by the way, which I think is allowed anyway, is to put a pipeline across the water line easement to a septic area on land that we own up behind the cottage. I don't think that's going to be a problem, is it? To run a pump line across the water line itself, so long as it, again, I spoke with the town sanitarian and he said as long as our line was encased for 10 feet on either side of where it crossed the water line, it should not be a problem.
Service line?
No, it's got to be, there's a future if they want to build a pump line up to the hill that we own top. So they're going to have to go across the water line. So it's going to be 18 or 24 inches, whatever it has to be.
They're going to run the water line now, they're going to run a septic up to the hill. So they have to cross the water line, they have to go across the easement. With proper-
Yeah, it will be approved by the town sanitarian.
Well, you're right, they'll just put a sleeve on it.
Right, exactly, and we have no problem doing that. As long as we're allowed to do it. But as the easement reads right now, we can't put-
The reason he's saying that is because the way the easement reads, you can't even put a bush on the easement. So if he wants to put in a septic up the top of the hill, he's got to cross the easement.
He's got to be able to put a sleeve on it, too.
Yes, yeah. So that's what I'm saying, but the way it reads now, we shouldn't even be on that property if we sign it off, you know what I mean?
I would think the reason that you couldn't put something there was because if the water main needs to get fixed, you need to be able to get to the main, correct?
Of course, but that's what we're saying. So now he's signing over that, that he needs to put a line up, to put a septic type up top, which would give him a year-round home.
Right.
And with this easement, you can't do that.
What the writing that's saying right now, because they're not allowed to cross the easement, I understand what they're going with because there's a lot of property where, once you have that easement, he wants to expand. I wouldn't want to lose my property for that either, as long as the wording allows them to encase their pipe for the future, and they can use their property still for their use. I don't see a reason why that couldn't-
I don't either, Lou, and I know that Rich had drawn up language to do that. So, again, but I can't rely that all this is going to, everybody's going to keep their word and do-
Oh, no, no.
So, the process to do that is here. I'm happy to work with this miss for the next two weeks and try to get a resolution on that.
It's just like my property, I own an acre across the street. If I want to put a bit of power over there, that means that I can't cross that easement. You understand, so I'm paying taxes on that piece of property, an acre of land over there that I can't do anything with. You know?
Again, I'm just trying for clean water.
I understand, I understand, and we all want that too.
It's legal, it's green, and where things are.
But we need to be able to say that we can cross that easement.
I understand that, no one's trying to get in the way of that. We're just trying to get a water line-
But then you have to change the wording.
But I can't help how small those lots are and how they're broken up and all that. That was done years ago.
But we're not saying that, nobody wants you to help it. What we're saying is, you have to change the wording that we can cross and put something on the other side of the property if we need to.
It seems like Connecticut Water, the water company is trying to do the right thing that you guys have spent the time, they jogged the water and stuff like that. So fit wording so they don't lose the access to their use of property.
Which is what we offered.
Exactly, so I think they just need to explain that and be on paper so they don't lose that right.
That's fine, it is what we put offer, then again.
They refuse to, yeah.
Their attorney feedbacked, told them, how would I know that they never saw it?
Yeah, so please misunderstand.
Anyway, they're telling you now.
And that's not going to get us anywhere, I mean-
You could table, you could table this tonight, and then if something can be worked out in two weeks or whatever it takes, then you bring it back up again and go forward.
We can have a vote, and however the vote goes, we have a motion on the table, so there is to be a vote.
So we have two options at this point. We can vote, or make a motion to call motions on the floor. And with a vote of two-thirds, that will put the old motion to bed, or we can vote on the current motion.
There's also a motion to table, but there's already a motion on the table for a table. You've got to vote on that first, one way or the other.
We already have one before that.
To table, you still have to do it again.
I can see a motion. Right, we've got one motion now already, and then we can go to the next decision.
Well, you go to the next motion to table it after you've already voted.
Exactly, that's why that motion would have to rescind their motion.
All right, well, we could do that, you send a motion and then we can table it. I think that would be the safest way before we get to-
Are we going to vote on this motion?
So, I just have a question.
You actually have an easier chance of voting against it than you have-
So, it sounds like the town is willing to work with the Smiths. It sounds like the town is willing to work with the Smiths to change the wording so that they'd be happy with signing the document. And you do the motion, that if that doesn't work out, you can proceed the next process. Because the rest of us absolutely want our clean water, and we don't want to lose our summer. And you are going to work diligently with this miss to-
Just if we vote yes tonight, right?
Vote yes tonight, the town's going to work with them to get the language they need.
And this is something you can easily do with them from afar. From afar, this could be done email. You were making them promise to work on your other motion. So, can the first, the first motion, can he rescind his motion to approve what she just said?
Let me read what we have for motion right now. And if the guy who did the motion wants to rescind it, they can, other than that, you got to all include it. The motion on the floor right now is, a motion by Bob DuVal, seconded by Ally and Dean, who approved the resolution to purchase easements for a water line in 98 Little Meadow and necessary commensurate proceedings for the acquisition of said easement in accordance with Connecticut law, that puts on the floor right now.
The motion, the motion's coming forward. You see, it's the performatting motion, we're moving that motion. Okay, so we have to vote on the motion. Okay, actually, it's a better condition because it's only going to require 50% to get it down versus the call, which would be a two-thirds vote. So, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yay.
The ayes added.
Now, are you guaranteeing that you're going to-
Rewording?
Why would I not?
I'm just wondering.
I did this already.
I'm just wondering.
The Smiths are very happy with that, okay? We just got to work with them, we got two weeks to do it, we got three weeks before it goes through. We can do that, right?
All right.
Everybody wants the same thing, let's make it happen a couple of days.
And I will say for the record, that I'm very, I'm not happy that your attorney did not-
Right. But we thought we could work every time.
I don't understand why you were not saying.
I've had a lot of our attorneys, believe me.
Okay, guys. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll stand here.
All in favor?